I think it works. Slow up the traffic.
We do have our person.
I don't know what was Ann coming?
I believe she told me she was.
Okay.
Did she respond back? Who responded? Oh, I think I see those.
Yeah, and then.
I'm sitting here having to update the font and everything. As you get older, you're like, what?
Yeah, Ann said she planned on attending. She said she intended on attending.
We do have some people online. Ready? Okay. Good evening, gentlemen. And welcome to the East Endfield Township Planning Commission for September fourteenth. I invite you to help open the meeting with the pledge to flag.
Congratulations to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the way of a little housekeeping this evening, we have, as you can see, several members missing. So Mr. Boltby and Mr. Spangler will be voting members this evening. So just hopefully Ann's coming, but five of us. So the first item for this evening is a review of the minutes from the August tenth meeting.
I didn't have any corrections, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from the August tenth meeting.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Callis, that we accept the minutes or approve the minutes as submitted for the August tenth meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. So that will be unanimous, five zero. Alright, the first plan for review, first action item this evening is the Sheets Flori Mill final plan. We have waivers and file land plan.
We are here for, on behalf of Sheets. Unfortunately, there were some conflicts in schedule, so there's not going to be actually any Sheets representatives tonight. But feel free to ask any questions, and if there's any operational questions, we can certainly get back to you with any answers. But just starting off to say that the operations and maintenance of the facility is going to be exactly the same as over on State Road. Same entities, same general character and nature of the way that they go about their business. Okay. So do you mind if we do the waivers at the end? That, okay?
We'll act on them before the plan, though.
Before the plan, okay.
Yeah, but you can go through your presentation however you like.
Okay, cool, thank you. Alright, well, I guess what we can do is we can start off with the existing conditions. I think I would like to go over the existing conditions with everyone, so they're familiar with what's out there today. So basically, what we're showing on the plan or on the monitor is the existing conditions is two or three, technically three parcels to usable tracts of land to the west and to the east. They are going to be removed and demolished, and then the proposed sheet is going to be installed in that place. All the way to the right is the stream along with the sewer line easement, sewer and sewer line easement. On Flori Mill Road at the southeast corner of the property, that is the Flori Mill Road Bridge that crosses the creek. The intersection that we will be talking about this evening is Royerstown Road and Flori Mill Road. Both of those intersections have been identified as township roads. So in the proposed condition, what we'd be looking at is we'd be looking at putting in a we'd be looking at putting in a new Sheets facility, and a part of this project, to begin this project, is a lot consolidation. So the three lots that were previously mentioned will be consolidated into one lot, and that one lot will be utilized to satisfy all the requirements for zoning and also the functionality of the site. So kind of running through the site layout for everybody, there will be access on Flori Mill Road and also on Royerstown Road. Royerstown Road will be a right-in, right-out only. That's based on traffic situations and the proximity to the intersection. So the Flori Mill Road exit, or excuse me, Flori Mill Road entrance or driveway will be the full main access for the facility. There will be six gas pumps at the beginning, at the front of the facility. There is no car wash or anything like that at this facility, however, there is a drive-through, which is pretty standard now in all of their new all of their new locations. So just kind of going from west to east, we start off with the adjoining property, row of parking, and a drive aisle, which then leads into which then leads into the gas pumps and the main facility, the building itself. On the right-hand side of the facility are additional parking, and then all the way to the far east on the on the main development area is the drive-through lane in which you have the order point located right outside of, I think it's spot twenty-five. And then continuing on to the rear of the facility where you would be picking up your food and beverage. There also is a bypass lane in case there is someone that is going around the building and decides that they're either not going through the drive-through or if they are just circling the building for parking. It is a one-way into the rear based on site circulation to keep it everything safe in a good manner. Trash facility, the dumpster location is located to the rear, and then along the drive-through on the right-hand side of the drive-through facing north, right-hand side of the drive-through is a retaining wall. Past the retaining wall towards the creek is the floodplain area, so we are not impacting anything into the floodplain. Actually, well, we'll go on a little bit farther by saying that we're enhancing the floodplain area and establishing it as a riparian buffer. Part of what Scott and I were working on, we're establishing that as a riparian buffer from here on out, that it will be protected and utilized in that manner. Out front, out front is the stormwater basin, so we have the ability here to go green, as like I like to say, is we have the ability to do an above-ground, green, aesthetically pleasing basin on the site, which is not always the case with the sheets. So that's actually going to be out in the front. The other thing I would like to highlight is outside of the property, beyond it into the intersection of Royerstown and Flori Mill Road, there's also a large green space area. Part of that area is actually owned by the township, and the other part is, the other connecting part on our site is owned by the Sheets Development. So one of the things I guess I would like to talk about, and this is usually always a good thing to to put out there, is there are going to be public improvements. So what we are doing here is from frontage to frontage, with the exception of the bridge, we are doing roadside improvements. So from the yellow line into the property, all the frontage will be upgraded and up to date. That would include mill and overlay and the right lane for the right-in for the extension past the light of Royerstown Road. So those would be all the public improvements on there. TPD is here to represent any questions that you would have with regards to any of the traffic situations or those improvements. We've been working with Scott and the traffic consultant with regards to the traffic engineer, excuse me, with regards to those improvements. So what you're looking at here is where we're at based off the traffic impact study as well as the design that has been reviewed by them as well. With regards to landscaping, with regards to landscaping, we are providing buffering along the along the western edge of the property. That will be on sheet ten. Sorry, I skipped a few. Technical difficulties. So as you can see per the plan, there's quite an extensive amount of vegetation that's being put into the site. I personally think it's going to look really nice when we're done. I think the state road sheets turned out pretty well, too, so. All the way out to the west, going left to right on the plan page, we are installing a buffer for the neighbor to the left as well as putting some buffering around the rear to prevent any views from behind the site. However, it's the owner of the property behind the site is also the owner of the Sheets, that's, I'm sorry, is the owner of the property that Sheets is purchasing it from. So we've worked with them to make sure that they're okay with their visual and their views and so on and so forth. They'll be a little elevated, the trees will block it, it shouldn't really be any problem. So the other part that we're doing is we're providing and putting meadow mix down, which is a seed mixture typically found in areas near riparian buffers and whatnot. So that's the hatching that you'll be seeing, that you are seeing along the retaining wall, along the rear, and then along the retaining wall. And then again, just to reiterate, we are putting that riparian buffer on our side of the stream on this property. So it's going to preserve and reserve all of that green area along the side, basically to the east of the development. The basin out front, we're going to place some street trees. Sheets particularly does sodding, that's their thing, they like the green grass with irrigation and all that stuff. So that's going to be out front, and then there's going to be a basin mix placed inside the basin to provide it better aesthetic qualities other than just the green grass. So that's, I think that's, that's my overview of the project. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I guess not. So go to your variances.
So based on the unique characteristics of the site, we did have some variances that we did have to apply for and go for. The first variance here is a for sidewalks. The sidewalks is not a variance but a deferral. Sheets has agreed to install the sidewalks in front, along the frontage if and ever, if or if it were ever to happen or be installed with any connecting sidewalks. So what we've provided is we've provided an exhibit to Scott and his team to demonstrate that sidewalks can be installed if it's a later on date that that were to happen. From a safety standpoint and a pedestrian connectivity, it really doesn't really make too much sense to to install the sidewalk. It really doesn't go anywhere. And in the future, the Flori Mill Bridge would also have to be taken into consideration because the sidewalk would have to end at the bridge, and it wouldn't be, the bridge itself wouldn't be wide enough for it.
Is this the comment that LCPC made a comment on about making sure that the grading is appropriate for sidewalks, or is it another plan? Is it this plan?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, and in all, in pretty much all circumstances now, if they look for a deferral, we try and make sure that there's there's adequate space for it, and they're not prohibiting it by something that they're doing.
Okay, so what he just mentioned about working with you.
Yeah, yeah, we do that. Okay, yeah, we do that, too.
Maybe I just need a little clarification, Scott. As I read through a number of these plans tonight, there's deferrals for either curbing or widening or sidewalks and so forth. Some of them have a stipulation that there's a fee in lieu of attached with it. Is there a general rule or procedure for when you request a fee in lieu of versus not, for instance, this was does not, but I think somewhere further on, I I saw it in somebody else's plan.
Yeah, the fee in lieu of generally is associated with the frontage improvements for the the restoration of the road from the curb line to the center line. In this case, they're doing a vast majority of it as part of the project. The only small section that they're not is in front of the bridge on Flori Mill Road. So this is limited just to that area. Otherwise, they are putting in new curb. They're milling and overlaying to center line, to center line, the whole way, the whole way through.
Okay, so maybe as we go through the other plans, I'll find it, but I thought other sidewalk deferrals required a fee in lieu of. You don't have to, you don't have to go looking for it now. Think about that as we go on.
Yeah, this one would just be a straight.
Doing the paving, but they're already going to do the paving.
Yeah, this one, the sidewalk, they're simply deferring and entering into agreement with the township.
That's what I was used to for sidewalks, but I thought somewhere in one of the other plans, apparently, I saw it, that included a fee in lieu of. I was, I guess I was surprised to see that because I didn't think we requested a fee in lieu of sidewalks.
Yeah, I'll check the letters as we.
Well, as we go through, we'll see them, okay. I just mentioned to the other commission members, if you have questions about these, any of these modifications, ask them as we go through them, because I don't want to have to come back and rehash them, okay? Okay?
The second waiver request is for planting islands. When we went through this, the extent of the planting island would have left a odd one space on the left-hand side of the plan. So the waiver modification here is based on the functionality of the specific lot. Basically, the use of the parking that being relevant to placing the parking as close as we can to the building. And that was pretty much with what we have. Also, what we did was we did provide the planting requirements for the island elsewhere on site. So the planting requirements have still been complied with. It was just the physical island itself, which kind of stuck out, stuck out like a little bit of a sore thumb on this particular site. The third waiver is for driveway separation distance. We are kind of landlocked here with regards to the intersection and the light itself. So we have provided as much driveway separation as we can from the light. Again, all the traffic information has been addressed, so it does satisfy all those requirements too as well. Number four is again, a different location in the ordinance with regards to sidewalk. The same general principle for the deferral. It happens to be under your streets and sidewalk section. Number five has to do with the rate control. So this regard, this is within for stormwater management, and this is a waiver for the requirement of the fifty percent reduction of new impervious. So actually, this is a redevelopment plan, and we are actually reducing the amount of impervious as we already have it. So the development itself is reducing the amount of impervious, which is going to reduce it from the existing condition, and then we're still going to meet the existing conditions rate control. So the waiver would be for the fifty percent reduction. Number six is for the minimum pipe size. This one's more of a technical nature. The minimum pipe size waiver here is for the roof drain collection system, which is pretty standard for the Sheets itself. Just based on the amount of rainwater coming from this building. It's not a very large building, so those pipe sizes would be smaller than. Number seven is for the geological report. Specifically, the report is based on the stormwater management design. The stormwater management design is not proposing infiltration. So to comply with the stormwater management of volume requirements, we are using plantings, evapotranspiration, and a constructed filter. So that is how the stormwater is being managed from a volume standpoint on site. Particularly, gas stations are usually type of hotspots, so they try to frown from putting any water in the ground as much as possible. So it worked out for the site. Again, there was some room here to use some green infrastructure to. Number eight is talking about the planting islands. This is just a different section of the ordinance where this applies. Same conversation of what we had before, being in compliant and then providing the necessary landscaping. And number nine is regarding the street trees. If you've been out to the corner of Royerstown and Flori Mill Road, there are utilities everywhere. So we have utility poles and lines. So what we did was we did the best that we could to fit in as many street trees as we could. And that's base, that's the basis of it, is there's conflicting existing utilities there. And the last one is for the buffer planting strip, and the buffer planting strip that we showing is a proposed alternate. It complies with the intent of the requirements for the planting strip itself under the section there. It's just an alternate design, so.
Okay, thank you. Nate, do we have anybody on Zoom that would want to have any input in this plan?
There are a few people on Zoom, but there are no comments.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any input before we take actions? So then, first first subject here would be the modifications, and we have ten of them, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications what are listed one through ten in our review, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Spangler, that we recommend approval of modifications one through ten, subject to the staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, that would be unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend approval of the final land development plan for the Sheets project, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, once again, the motion is by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Spangler, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for Sheets Flori Mill. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, unanimous.
Excellent.
Alright, next item is twenty-eight, twenty-one Old Tree Drive Final Plan.
Alright, excuse me, good evening. My name is Dave Bettner with RGS Associates, and I think Nate's bringing up a rendering.
Catching up. That's a little slow. Alright, so the project in question here is located twenty-eight, twenty-one Old Tree Drive, which is southwest of the traffic circle at Running Pump Road and Old Tree Drive. Currently on the site, there's about a forty-three thousand square foot building. This project, we're proposing to expand that, essentially infill project. It's about twenty-three thousand plus or minus square foot warehouse building that they're adding on to it. There's, there's two access points into the site. The one on the east of a running pump road is remaining where it is. There's one to the north. There's an existing one there. That one's actually getting shifted to the west slightly to allow better access for, for the trucks that would come back to access the warehouse. Stormwater on the site, we're controlling with an underground stormwater facility, and then there will also be a surface facility. Ultimately, that's going to discharge to the south into an existing easement on the adjoining property. The applicant is working with the adjoining property owner on agreements to allow that, or allow them to grade in their, on their property. So it's a pretty straightforward project. It's happy to answer any specific questions you might have on it. We do have some waivers that we're also requesting and a couple of deferrals similar to the previous plan with the sidewalks and street improvements. So I can walk through each one of those if you would like. If you guys have any specific questions, I can answer any specific questions on them.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. The first question I had is when looking over the plan, the, I believe it's the northwest corner where your access drive is. The access drive curbing and/or edge of pavement seems extremely close to the adjoining property, and there's a contour line on the adjoining property. My question was, do you have an easement and rights to do that?
There is no easement. We can take a closer look at that. I don't know exactly where you're referring to, but I can look closer at the plan to see, see where that is. We can we can adjust it to to avoid that if that's the case.
I think the work may actually be within the right-of-way of Old Tree and not on the joining.
The plan shows it out, shows the contour outside, and it shows the back of curb right on the corner of the edge of the right-of-way in the property.
Okay, were you curbing the entrance? Okay.
Looking at the elevations of the face of curb or edge of pavement, the curb height and the existing contours and the grading of that contour.
Yeah.
It looks like it would impact that adjoiner. And I looked at the LOD on the ENS plan, the limited disturbance, and that goes outside the property.
We can take a closer look at that and adjust it if need, if it's.
Okay, Dave, you want to walk through the modifications?
Alright, I'll just go down through DMA's letter for each one of them. First one out of Sado, section two sixty-five, eight-six, C-one for for the access drive on the, on the western property line, to reduce that to eighteen feet.
To thirteen feet, to eighteen?
Yes, thirteen feet. I apologize, reading the wrong one. Yeah, and that's going to be one-way traffic around there, so we're not going to have, you're not going to have any conflicting movements going in each direction. And we have ran turning movements to show that the trucks can get down in there and back up into the, back up into the loading dock. Number two, buffer planting strip on the, on the western property line. There is a buffer planting strip required. This is essentially, there's a swale that goes down the property line, and then the basin is down farther on the property line. There's an existing sway there as well. So the recommendation from DMA is that we take a look at those and get as many of those on other parts of the property as possible to still provide the planning, it's just not in the location where they are due to the stormwater easement and swale down the property line. Number three, another landscaping one regarding the the planting islands. Essentially, the same thing, so those will be provided elsewhere on the plan due to conflicts within the planting islands. Number four, this is driveway separation. This is a driveway that we're relocating on the northwestern side of the site. Number four, this is driveway separation. This is a driveway that we're relocating on the northwestern side of the site. The requirement's a hundred and fifty. The driveway opposite where we are, we're a hundred and forty-eight feet. So it's essentially meets the requirements. We're just slightly off to a hundred and fifty. Number five, this is from the stormwater ordinance regarding loading ratios. So we're exceeding the allowable loading ratio in the stormwater facilities. And we're working with the geologist and get a recommendation for the the increase in the loading ratios. And we're also, in this case, not infiltrating. They're essentially got zero infiltration rates in our stormwater facilities, so we're providing alternative MRC design, which is DP's requirement. If you can't infiltrate. Number eight is pipe diameter. Requesting to use a four-inch pipe diameter on the the downspouts, essentially the roof drains. We don't need the eight-inch size, so requesting that to be four inches. Number seven, so number seven and eight essentially go together for sidewalks and street improvements, street improvements along Old Tree Drive and sidewalks along Old Tree Drive and Running Pump Road, requesting for all of those with the condition that we'll provide an agreement and a fee in lieu of of the roadway improvements for the the curb and paving along Old Tree Drive.
It does say it there. It's, we try and find a placeholder to put that in, so it doesn't get lost with the with the applicant. So it's not directly tied to the sidewalk deferral, but we, again, we try and find a home for it. It more ties into the overall street improvement sections.
Well, that's on next one.
Yeah, the next one. Yeah, it's in there too.
Can we take it out of seven?
We could, yeah.
Please.
Sure.
Let's be consistent. We don't need two fee in lieu of half, right?
Number nine, this has to do with the de-watering time in the stormwater facilities. Per DP guidance with the MRC facilities, you can do water in seventy-two hours, which township requires twenty-four hour for their rate controls. There's a conflict between the the two methodologies. So it's asking for an increase in the de-watering time. And then number ten, this is essentially the the duration of the storm. The SES requires twenty-four hours in the ordinance. Again, conflict with DP where we can go to a twelve-inch or twelve-hour SES storm. So we're just requesting the modification to use, to be able to use essentially to follow DP methodology.
I have a question, maybe more for staff on modification number two. Help me understand the recommendation for denial, but then.
I think that was the one. We were asking for a waiver of it just to not do it, not to put the screen in.
Okay.
They came back and and changed it to a modification to provide the trees elsewhere on site. Correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but I think that was the intent.
So the request has been changed to?
To a modification instead of just a waiver.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask one more question related to that same topic I I asked about. Is there a chance that relooking at the impact on the adjoiner could affect your modification request for the intersection separation, meaning it's one forty-eight versus one fifty? And if you can't impact the adjoiner and you have to move your access drive two feet, would that modification go away?
It would, yeah. I mean, if if for some reason we would have to shift it over to avoid some impacts, it would, yes.
You may look at radius adjustments too.
Yeah. What's our timing on this application? I mean, should we have that looked at and brought back?
I think at this point, it's a fairly minor technical thing that they can that they can address. If you if you if you recommend approval of the driveway separation, the worst case is that they don't need it, but they'd have it if they do, if they do need it, so.
What about for the plan? That's minor enough to?
Yeah, because you'll make your, you'll make your recommendation with the condition that they satisfy the 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 remaining comments within the letter, which there are a couple of other minor plan comments that are associated with the things that need to be finished at this point. So there will be some, there'll be some minor changes again to the plans before before it's finally recorded.
But should, excuse me, should we add a specific comment to handle, to address Josh's question? That that, because that wasn't something that you brought up in your.
Sure, if you want to add it to your motion, that they that they investigate if there's a conflict at that.
Yeah.
At that particular location.
On the plan itself, yeah. The modification would be fine. Okay, so I'm just kind of going through this list. It looks like numbers one, three, four, five, six, nine and ten are straight out grants. And two is needs to be conditional, right?
Two, seven and eight.
Two, seven and eight are conditioned. And seven is to also include removing the fee in lieu of.
Yeah, and you want that added to eight?
No, eight's already got it.
It's already in there.
It's already in eight. That's why I'm saying it's there twice.
We can address, we'll, we'll update that in our letter before it goes to the board of supervisors.
All right, let's do the easy ones then. Three through six, nine and ten, right?
Yeah.
Oh, Nate, anybody on this plan?
There are no comments.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications as listed in the review letter, one, three, four, five, six, nine and ten, with a change to modification. Oh, no. That's subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second the motion. Okay, a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Fullerton, that we recommend approval of modifications, one, three, four, five, six, nine and ten, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That would be five-zero.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors conditional approval of modification two, seven and eight with the amendment to modification seven to remove the comment about fee in lieu subject to staff and engineer.
I'll second it again. So we have motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Fullerton, that we recommend conditional approval of modifications two, seven and eight with the additional change to modification seven to remove the fee in lieu of. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five to zero. All right, so then the final plan itself.
Trying to think how we want to word that in light of, we want them to review and and potentially modify it.
For staff and engineers comments with the addition of a review of the northwest corner.
Entranceway.
The northwest corner, yeah.
Yeah.
For for conflict with neighbors.
That makes sense to you, Josh?
I couldn't hear what you guys were saying, but. I'm just saying, we could make a motion for recommending per staff and engineer comments with the addition that they need to look at the northwest corner for any conflict with the neighbor.
Or obtain the right to do, to do the plan as designed.
I guess that's minor enough.
Think as long as it's noted.
I'm fine, as long as something's mentioned about it, that we're not approving something on somebody else's property.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of the final land development plan for the Old Tree Drive project subject to the applicant verifying that they're not encroaching on the neighbor's property and that the entranceway in the northwest corner is adequate for staff and engineer. All of that subject to staff and engineer comments. I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Boltby, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for twenty-eight, twenty-one Old Tree Drive, subject to staff and engineer comments as noted in the latest review letter with the addition of clarifying that there's no encroachment or conflict with the neighbor at the northwest corner of the property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Next up, twenty-eight, seventy, Yellow Goose Sketch Plan.
Good evening. My name is Chris Van Archik with RGS Associates. Here tonight to present the plan that you see up on the screen there in the township. So I give a very brief overview of the project itself, and really the purpose of why we're here this evening is for the sketch plan application that we submitted. There is a waiver request associated with that plan to waive the preliminary plan application process. So the project itself that you see up there is about eight point seven acres. The address is twenty-eight, seventy, Yellow Goose Road. It is the site of the Charles and Alice business, where if you're familiar with, they make small applesauce pouches that children often have in their lunchboxes and so forth. So business has been thriving. They're, you know, happy to be in the township and operating their business, and they look to expand to meet their their business demands. The property is an industrial use. It is in the Enterprise Zoning District. And the existing building that you see up there in the lighter shade is about fifty-five thousand square feet. The darker shades are showing where they're looking at two expansions. That would be about twenty-four thousand feet. So the expansion on the south side of the property is more for daily operations, their manufacturing, and then eventually, you know, shipping, receiving. And then the small addition out front is just to add some more office capacity. Access remains the same. We're not changing anything there. There is no subdivision. That would be a part of this project. Right-of-way improvements, we would look at that as we get into land development and so forth. Stormwater management is pretty straightforward. Everything essentially drains to the south towards the stream. And there were some credits that were applied to this property from the floodplain restoration that was adjacent to the south. So that's kind of some of the stuff that we would look forward to as we get into the land development. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about the plan itself. Again, this being a sketch plan, we haven't really gotten into technical design or anything like that, any kind of engineering. This was really just to introduce the project through the process that's outlined in the ordinance and request the waiver of the preliminary plan.
Chris, is that space already paved or is it is it pervious now?
Most of that, I believe, is already paved or stone. But we don't have concern with exceeding maximum lot coverage or having a a challenge with managing stormwater management, managing stormwater.
Curiosity question. Has has the Army Corps revised the flood zone area there at all since the hospital's been built? And that stream work?
I know they've been doing. Design engineer applied for that. I'm not certain if that's come back finally yet, but but if anything, it would, it would help the property with what they did. Yeah, as opposed to expand it. And as was mentioned, there were credits because the property owner participated in the project, they get some stormwater credits that are associated with the work that was done in the floodplain.
Nothing on Zoom?
Nothing.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any comments? Ready for a motion on the so the modification, the waiver?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors waiver the preliminary plan requirements for this project.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Caldas, that we recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver for twenty-eight, seventy, Yellow Goose Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous, five-zero.
Thank you for your time.
All right, the next plan is Homestead Village. Waivers and final land development.
All right, Homestead, we have a render for that one as well. So Homestead Village is proposing a addition onto their existing facility. Proposing seventy-three assisted living or long-term care units attached to their existing building with some common open spaces in there in the building as well. Along with the building, there's some associated parking. You can see on the eastern side of the plan there, essentially making the connection all the way down through from the northern street there, down through around the eastern side of their building. Adding some additional parking to accommodate for the for the new units. Stormwater, we have two underground stormwater facilities. They're depicted in a kind of a dark black line in the, on the north and south of the existing or the proposed building. And then off the site, there's an existing basin on the adjoining property, which is being slightly modified. That was part of a previous plan. That was, that was done on the on the property several years ago. So we are in receipt of DMA's letter from September ninth. There's still a few outstanding technical comments. We can work through staff, we can work through those with staff and and DMA. And we have a couple of waivers. I can go through each one of those as well. Discuss those. Unless you guys have any specific questions on the plan before I move move into those.
How about the modifications?
Gone down through DMA's letter, the first one for plan scale. Requesting the modification on on the sheets to provide a different plan scale based on the sheet size and the overall size of the plan. Number two, buffer planting strips, similar to the one that we just had on twenty-eight, twenty-one. This one, there's, there's two locations, one on the south side. There is a, along the southern property line, there's an existing access drive. So we can't get the the buffer plantings in on that one, so we're asking for a waiver of that. And then off the plan, you can see where there's a sidewalk there. They're doing a sidewalk extension up to their their Bachman Center. It's a different property, so we're asking for a modification up there as well for the the buffer plantings between those two properties. Number three, perpendicular islands, essentially in the parking lot. There's a couple of area where the islands on each side of the access drive don't don't line up. So we're just asking for a modification of that. Number four, shade trees and parking parking islands. So just asking, due to some conflicts in the parking lot with stormwater easements, other utilities that we'll just provide the trees that were required in there elsewhere on the plan. Number five, curbing to be installed. This is mostly for around the parking areas. We're asking, we're just putting sidewalk flush up against the the parking areas with with wheel stops along those throughout the throughout the community. Mostly because of the the age of the the residents in there, just to avoid tripping hazards, those types of things. Number six, on the stormwater loading ratios in the stormwater facility, similar to the last plan that we were talking about. So we'll, we're working with the geologist and get the recommendation to to provide the the increased loading ratios in the stormwater facility. Number seven, cover over stormpipe. We have one area. It's on the southern part of the of the site where we have we aren't quite meeting the one foot of cover. So we're, per DMA's recommendation, we're providing the type four RCP pipe there. It's a little bit stronger than your typical plastic pipe to account for the the decrease in 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 cover. Number eight, this, this is for. Number eight, this, this is for, and Scott, we can explain this one a little bit better. I know we've done this on another plan about the hundred and twenty five percent over parking, the overall parking requirement, we're more than a hundred and twenty five percent over it. And I think, you know, per discussions with the township staff and engineer, they want us to request, request that we leave just to get the, the PC and the, and the board to act on, on the request. So if you had anything to add to that one specifically, but.
Now, the, the idea of that section is to try to not overpark facilities and try not to have extra impervious. In this case, it was justified because of the use and the overall like total size of the property sort of is, is a driver in, in how we got to that number, but we feel what they're providing is, is appropriate for the facility.
So how many? What's the parking spaces today versus what they'll be after this plan? How many, how many parking spaces are today?
I believe the calculation they did related to the the proposed use. Right? This wasn't for the whole.
I'm having trouble reading that. Trying to get a little bigger here. This thing is three oh seven and for this addition, four sixty nine?
Four sixty nine additional?
No.
Total.
Yes, so I don't think.
Three oh seven existing, four sixty nine. And how many units are they adding?
Seventy three. Yeah, I don't think we have the number existing parking spaces on that chart. So I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Well, I'm curious because to, to be honest, I go in there often to go to the gardens of the church down behind, okay? There are a lot of parking spaces that are not in use today, a lot. And I drove around behind the property to look at the eastern side of the property and most of those parking spaces back there were empty too. I know some are probably for staff and it's probably, depends what time of day you're there, but there seems already to be an awful lot of parking in there that's not being used. So I'm just kind of curious how if it really does go from three oh seven to four sixty nine, that would be more than two cars per, or that would be two cars per space. Perfect. Two cars per unit additional being added. And, and those people are not going to have two cars each.
Yeah.
Typically, you provide one parking space per unit when you're looking at the apartments and the ones that take it as six, you have one center, something parking spaces per unit. And talk to Homestead Village, where they're trying to achieve, to trap residents to the property, everybody wants one space. So we're only assigning actually one parking space per each unit. So we're seventy three, we're only assigning one more parking space per unit. So seventy three parking spaces.
Okay, so, so the numbers don't quite add up. If it's, if we really have three oh seven today, or if you have three oh seven today, you're actually adding two per unit to get to four sixty nine, four sixty nine.
It's not adding up. I don't know. I don't think we have that specific number on our plan, so I don't know exactly what.
Well, I, I guess on where I'm coming from is we're trying to reduce the amount of pavement. When we go by, when I go by the property, I see a lot of empty spaces already. And now you're talking about adding apparently more, significantly more. And I, I don't agree with that. So that's just where I'm coming from. I think maybe somebody should go back and do a more detailed count or something like that, but I see a lot of spaces open on Apostle Way there. Cause this is just for your apartments, right? All, all the, all the cottages and so forth have their own parking. That's not counted in this number we're talking about here. Yeah, okay.
I think you mentioned, depends on the climate there. So there are some periods of time when they shift from August fix to April, during your time, you may need to come over to find even by the dining, which is part of campus, another period, different car, there's there are peak periods where we need additional spaces. And then change of shift when staff are coming in, they shift, and you need to clear up the common. But we have worked with this every time we look at the plan, we're trying to help the minimal number of parks that meets the program that you really present to staffs that you learn sensitively.
I think in a long term, so we did have, I call it, five decades, we need to build staff, but we talked about a certain issue. And really what we thought was that to, to bug one, we didn't have any more parking necessarily. Cause to add these spaces, one cost fine, we didn't have to spend more money than necessary for parking. And then in turn, you're also you're having so much. We did take a close look at that, if you wanted to take advantage of the market, you could bet, retract the evidence, or let them do it. They want to be sure they have a good parking space assigned.
I, I, I agree with that. And certainly if you have to add seventy, that's fine, but I'm surprised you need that many. I really am. And Nate, would you put the first plot or the first picture up there, please? The, the overview that you started with? Yeah, that one. Again, as, as I drove around the back on the east side there, it, it almost looks like there will be less parking back there in, in the future than there is today. There's some good sized parking lots back there. So, so where are all the extra spaces going? That's, so I can't figure out where, where are the parking spaces? Cause you're not adding them anywhere else, right?
I'm gonna say it's south of the new building, there's one part.
Okay. All right. All right. I've got to ask this question because of the, the discussions that went on with the township over the last couple of years about traffic in and out of the development, especially to Good Drive. We're talking about adding this many more units. Is there anything being done to help your clients or customers get in and out? I know there was an issue with trying to get out to Good Drive or Marietta. Is, is anything going to change? Are we just going to add seventy more, more people to the area?
I mean, two things about it. One is that seniors don't drive off campus. Our business is running Good Drive, we're bringing our residents from our other neighborhoods, the news, the Homestead, over to the main campus. Since then, we built a stopper spray house, which is the house at the Homestead, and that's picking a lot of pressure off residents coming to the campus. It will still happen, but it was mostly a safety concern, maybe that by turning.
Right. I, I agree with you. Okay. All right. So we were talking about number eight. We've got that explanation.
Yeah, that was the parking.
Yeah.
So number nine and ten are the deferrals for the roadway improvements in this, this site. When you go to the west front on Good Drive. So these are specifically for the improvements along Good Drive for the, the roadway improvements and the sidewalk and same as previous one. I think that if I read this correctly, I think maybe that notes. And number ten. I think via lieu of, is that, is that the same as on the twenty twenty one? Does that need to come out?
Sure, yeah, we can take that off.
I think this one's condition two on providing an exhibit to show that that can be graded in there, so.
Yeah, the same as the other ones.
So which one does it come off of?
Ten.
Off of ten.
Off of ten, because that's the sidewalks. The other one is the curbing. Well, the other one says curbing sidewalks and white, whiting, but whatever.
Yeah.
So number ten is removed. Or ten is the B is removed from ten. The, the other question I have is about the buffering. I think it was up in your comments, Scott, about a note about trees having to be replanted and so forth.
Yeah, I, I think it was, I think it was the way the, the note was worded that it mentioned during construction, but we just wanted it to be clear that the buffer is required to be a permanent facility and that if it's if there's a loss to the buffer, it's because it needs to be replaced.
Yeah. So on eastern properties, is that a, is that buffer, is that what you're planning? Is a buffer, those green and brown trees, that's, that's above, that'll be planted to, to the ordinance as far as spacing.
Correct. Yeah, that, that'll meet the.
Shade and everything.
I, I'll say that with the exception of in the bottom right hand corner. There's an existing, some existing evergreens that are already there. That's a, a good buffer right now. So those trees will remain and there'll be some trees planted in front of it to kind of bolster it up a little bit, but the so the, that'll be a little bit different, but for the most part, yes, it's, it meets ordinance requirements.
So again, with reference to that property line, the buffer is going to be within what fifteen feet, twenty five feet, twenty?
That's the requirement, yes.
Okay, so will they be planted up as high as possible on that mound? Because it goes up to the adjacent neighborhood, the R one. My concern is that we're building a six-story building right next to low, low density residential and I want to make sure we have as much buffering for those people as possible. So I don't want, I, I guess I'd say I wouldn't want the trees planted right down next to the, the road, cause it, there is probably a ten or fifteen foot upgrade there.
There is. So there's from, from where the pavement is on the, the parking lot, there's about a ten foot embankment and then the trees will be planted on top of it.
Good. Cause I, I believe most of the existing trees up there now are on the neighbors' properties and they're getting to be about forty year old white pines, which probably won't be around for another twenty years. So I think it's important that your, your buffering gets there, gets up and is ready to take its place. Because six stories is, how high is the building?
I think we're around seventy five feet.
Yeah. Right.
It's about fifty, well, it's required, but if you put horizontal vision from top line.
Right. It's fortunate that it's down low, a little low. That helps, but yeah, it'll still be up there. Okay.
So that residential area is up ten feet above?
Yeah, we, we see where the driveway kind of goes up the right side. It's probably, like I said, ten, Chris said ten feet, I said ten to fifteen feet up to the property line. It is high and then it drops down.
I see.
So you know, one of the stories, there you go.
Okay.
But as you can see from the person's house on the right.
Yeah, so that's your buffer that's, that's.
Left of the property.
Proposed there.
That, the pine tree is actually.
Oh, that's the neighbors' property.
It's the other ones that I wanted to make sure were planted up top. Okay.
That they're meeting the ordinance.
Yeah, and if they put in, you know, good good shade trees and pine trees, they'll eventually get off, but I'm not going to cover everything, that's for sure. No. I appreciate that, cause I, I'm not one of those houses, but I am in that section of the township. So, you know, trying to avoid calls from my neighbors and stuff like that. Okay, I think we got through all the ordinances for all the modifications.
Looks like an attractive building. At least it's not a, a straight wall.
Right. All right. So once again, if we go through our inventory modifications here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine and ten are conditional, but one through eight are and number ten is we want to remove the fee in lieu of.
Are you comfortable doing them as a group or did you have anything?
Cover all in one motion, that's fine.
Okay.
Two unconditional.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications one through eight on the review letter subject to staff and engineer comments as well as modification nine and ten would be conditionally approved, subject to staff and engineer comments. Oh, and the removal of the fee in lieu from modification ten. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Spangler, that we recommend approval of modifications one through eight, conditional approval of modifications nine and ten, and the modification to number ten to remove the fee in lieu of sentence. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Unanimous now. All right, then the plan itself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors the final land development pan, plan for Homestead Village is subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, excuse me. I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Caldas. We recommend approval of the final land development plan for Homestead Village subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
The fifth plan for this evening's.
One more question.
Oh, sure.
We need to get action on the master plan.
I think it was simply an acknowledgement of it.
I think maybe an acknowledgement of the master plan that it's been updated to reflect these changes.
You're saying it has been?
They're, they're.
Man, I have a copy of it here. DMA has, has reviewed it and I think there's one comment that you have in your.
Just about a parcel number reference, that was all.
If you guys wanted to see it, I have a copy here. I can show you.
It's probably not much different than what we just saw, right?
Yeah, it's typical. It follow, it follows along with what we did with Brookside recently where the master plan's updated when, when changes happen to the site that, that are a little different than the original, so.
And also they're required to present the master plan how often?
Five years.
Five years. Five, every five, or if there's a significant change. So, so it's been updated as part of this project.
So you want us to, to what, acknowledge?
I think if you would. I don't think so. I think you just acknowledge it and the board will accept it when it comes to them then too.
Okay, so no action. Okay, just acknowledge it.
Yeah.
Acknowledge it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hide your head.
Alright, as I was saying, the fi- the fifth plan for this evening is Root Solar Final Plan. Waivers, modifications and the final end of all.
Good evening, my name is Tom Madison with Dean Surveys. Let me know, Mr. Meyer, Reed Myers, he's a developer. We are working on a forty-six acre property. It's fairly well, and I'm sure everybody knows where Root's Nurseries is located. Long Lititz Road there and Root Road and a little bit of frontage on seventy-two down in the southwest corner. What's proposed is right in the center, where you see that those, those dark lines there in the center is a roughly three-point-seven acre solar panel field. Uh, located kind of center, like almost like a donut hole in the center of the property. Right now, the property is owned by Root Road LLC, a separate LLC that's been formed to do the development. Lititz Road LLC is actually going to be going through with the, the development of the, the solar panels. It would be surrounded by an eight-foot-high fence, which is in accordance with the ordinance. Uh, right now, there's an existing driveway that comes off of, right across, there's a barn right across Lititz Road, right in front of that barn, there's a driveway that comes down right along the west side of the uh, the proposed solar field, so we'll just continue to use that driveway um for access into the solar field when necessary. Power is going to be fed into PPL system. They have an adequate system along Lititz Road that can receive the power from this system. We have verified that with them. Uh, so there won't be any modifications necessary to their lines along the road to, to make this happen. And then in terms of, of screening, um, the ordinance required a, a fairly heavy buffer around the entire perimeter. We did go to the zoning hearing board and they did grant a variance of that buffer and simply asked for a row of arboreators on the north and east sides, so the plan now proposes those, those shrubs just to protect the neighbors to the, to the east and to the north. Uh, to the south, we're over seven hundred feet to the nearest home. Uh, and to the west, it's the only residents is the, is the people that used to own the property, the Roots, uh, who are selling the property. So it's a fairly simple, straightforward plan. Um, I can answer any questions about this before I get into the modifications, but that's about all there is to it.
What's the dotted line around the field there?
That is the limit of our field survey.
Okay.
That'll actually, one of the, a couple of the waivers will actually deal with that particular issue uh, when we, when we get there.
There's no subdivision of the tract?
Nope.
To do this.
And then the nursery use beyond will ma- remain unaffected. Uh, just this, this, like I said, this donut hole out of the middle will be taken away, but the rest of the nursery will continue to operate uh, in, in the way it has been and will continue.
In, in that rendering, that's Lititz Road at the top.
That's Lititz Road at the top, that's correct. Root, Road would be off the right-hand side of the sheet, a, a little ways. It's about three hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the solar field over to Root Road.
Yeah.
This in that field where people park on Tuesdays, back there, I saw them doing some work.
No. Now, something, this is on the east side of.
So the, the buildings across the road and Lititz Road, that's a different property.
That's a different property.
Yeah, that's.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a dwelling in a barn, it's a farm, there's a dwelling in a barn over there.
And they'll be screened by the arboreator.
Correct.
It, it's about three and a half acres, right?
Three-point-seven.
Any impact in terms of like sun reflection and so forth with the airport being so close?
Wow, you caught me off guard with that one. I, I, I can't really speak to that, I, I, I don't know.
Okay, I just didn't know, I just know that that is potentially something that's, I mean, just because we have an airfield so close, that's why I was just asking. Because they're going to be accelerating at that point, Lititz, the, you know, where the, I mean, it's relatively close, so it's just something to consider.
They'd be coming from the northeast out over the field and their panels are facing southwest is what he's saying, so yeah, it should.
Oh, they don't, okay. Okay. They are sun tracking. Oh, they're not, okay. Okay.
And you're connecting to the grid long Lititz Road.
Alright.
I don't.
Okay. Just curious, how many megawatts or kilowatts or what, gigawatts, what are you talking about? Megawatts? Alright, so um, Tom, want to go through the modifications?
Absolutely, I'll just use DMA's letter. Number one is a preliminary plan waiver. Uh, we were through the board of supervisors with a conditional use of this plan already, so in lieu of a sketch plan. Um, the, the plan was taken through, so we are asking for a waiver of preliminary plan processing. And that's recommended to be granted. Uh, I, I'm just in features within two hundred feet of the subject tract. Uh, we've provided, again, with the limit of survey, we've surveyed the area that's immediately adjacent to this. And it's, it's like I said, it's hundreds of feet from anything else, so our request is basically to not have to show two hundred feet beyond even the property line, which is what the ordinance, strictly any ordinance would be. Um, and again, that's recommend with the grant with the condition that we provide an aerial, which is actually what the sheet is. This was a, a submission that we made, the last submission we made, we actually incorporated that. So this plan sheet's been added to the set, which provides that aerial that was a recommended condition of the, the approval. The next two go to survey, um, both, both speak to the marking of the core, the perimeter and the right-of-way and so forth. Because this site was located right in the center of the farm and there really was no other uh, impact, we did not do a, a typical boundary survey, where we locked down the boundary tight. We got it very approximately close, but not close enough that we want to mark it. So we are asking for relief from the, the requirement to mark the corners and to mark the rights of way, because while it's approximately correct, it's not nailed down to survey accuracy. So we are asking for relief of both of those requirements. Number five and number six are both uh, requests for waivers of road improvements and curbing along the road. Understanding the, the desire to have those deferred rather than waived, can understand that. Were a little surprised by the, the recommendation that a fee in lieu of be provided. That fee in lieu of is about forty-five thousand dollars for the uh, mill and overlay of Lititz Road. Um, I guess our feeling is that Lititz Road's already in good condition. There's absolutely no traffic being added as a result of the development. It's a very passive development. Um, there will be, there'll be nothing added to it. And so I guess our request would be that we, we would be willing to meet in the middle and have a deferral, so that if at some point the township needs those roads improved, the owner has to do it. But to not have to provide a fee in lieu of at this time, so.
And your forty-five thousand dollars, is it for one of these or two of these?
That is, well, it's the same, it's the same condition for both.
Right.
So essentially, one fee would cover both modifications. Yeah, I don't know, I don't think we're looking at paying the fee twice, it's more just.
That's why I wasn't sure we were asking for it twice.
Yeah.
Just one.
And, and I understand, it may be the policy of the township to do this on a routine basis. We think this project's a little bit different than a routine project, just because it's so passive and involves absolutely no traffic whatsoever. Um, that's, that's our, our thinking there.
And if they would have put these solar panels on the roof of something, that wouldn't even be required.
Correct.
It's because it's a land application of it. Yeah, that don't make sense.
So we'll, we'll come back to that when we're looking at the approvals and the, the uh, the last one's actually a new one that we added with the last submission. Um, relates to plan scale. Uh, required to be between ten and fifty feet to the inch. Uh, we do have a couple of plan sheets that are a hundred foot to the inch, just so we can show the entire property on one sheet. And that is also recommended to be approved, so. As a walk-through of modifications and waivers.
So for staff, I mean, we're, we're liable to get more of these uh, requests in the ag zone, so it's considered like a building? One? Cause these things kicked in as, as if it's a building that they're constructing.
It, it triggered a land development.
Land, oh, is that why? The curbing and the sidewalk and all that stuff got triggered?
Yeah. No sidewalk because of where it's at, but the curbing and the, and the widening.
Yeah. What triggers the land development plan? Is it considered impervious?
Uh, what triggered it? Is it any, any new uh, commercial use on the property?
Okay.
Yeah.
And what, what is traditionally a fee that's paid in lieu of for something like that? Or vary?
The township's policy is for the, is for the frontage associated with, with the project where where there's a larger site and only a portion of the projects being, been developed. We have worked with a developer to apply it only to maybe the direct frontage width of the, of the improvements, like this case, it might be just the width of the solar field as it extends out to the road. That was done with the Schreiber project when it was in, because they had a larger frontage and we did it just for the part where they were doing the addition, so that has been something that we have, we have done in the past when we've worked with a developer after the initial recommendation was made, so. So that could be done with.
So what was the estimate based on? The whole property? Whole, whole frontage?
Yeah, and that's, again, that's the standard, how it's applied.
Actually, I think, I think you only did Lititz Road, I don't think you included Root.
We did not include Root Road, no.
Just the frontage from the intersection at Root and Lititz Road across Lititz Road's frontage of the property, so essentially the side, and then you decide that this is certain facing on, it's getting its access from that. But um, again, just with there, with there being absolutely no impact to the road whatsoever. Um, our feeling is just that it just didn't seem like a, a waiver or a fee was, was appropriate really at all. That the deferral is certainly still a, a reasonable. You know, meet in the middle option, where that way if the township ever needs those improvements, the owner's on the hook to do it. But uh, isn't, isn't required to pay that fee at this time. So again, I, I don't want to not speaking against any precedent with other projects, I think this one's just a little bit different than most any other project in township, so that's why we're, we're asking for that.
We simply put the requirement forward, the board, the board very well could decide that it's appropriate to give relief of, of that when it, when it comes to them, and I think we were maybe just one step short in like it's, it's put forward and we, I guess we didn't quite have enough time to go back and forth to respond whether there's sort of relief of that or not, so I think that's, it's just being directly given to you guys tonight, but it's definitely something that can be discussed with the board when it gets to that to that next meeting.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think we need to make a recommendation.
We had to make a recommendation, I think that means.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
That's what, five and six.
Versus passive application like this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're, they're putting up the screenings, so um, it's you're.
The keeper.
You're not, you're, you're making it like no, no impact.
Strike the fee in lieu of.
That's uh, we do.
I agree. Defer. That's my opinion. And strike the, strike the fee. Okay, so that's the modifications. Um, anybody online for comments?
Haven't received any comments.
Okay. Alright, then let's um, take a look at taking care of these modifications. We got one, two. Uh, two is conditional.
One, three, four, five, seven.
I think five is repeated here.
Just two, five, twice. So.
Uh, number five was listed twice in the approval and then the uh, no, I mean, in the, in our, in our suggested motions.
Yeah.
Oh, I wasn't looking at that.
Yeah.
I was just looking at these motions.
Twice.
Modification mistake.
It's a conditional approval.
Number two, number two. But he's already, they've already met the condition, but still conditional.
That's the only conditional one.
No, well, the others are deferred.
Five and six are.
Five and six are deferral.
It's just conditional, yeah, yeah.
Condition based on a deferral. So two, five, six, one, three, four.
So I'll take a stab at this. Um, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modification one, three, four, and the seven. Subject to staff and engineer comments. I guess, I think I'll do the other in a separate motion to keep it cleaner.
Alright. I'll second. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Boltby, that we recommend approval of modifications one, three, four, and seven. Subject to the staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? That would be unanimous.
Then uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors conditional approval of modifications two, five, and six. Uh, including the recommendation that we drop the fee in lieu of uh, in light of the passive nature of this application.
For five and six, or numbers five and six, right?
Yeah, that's for numbers five and six, dropping the fee in lieu of for the passive use.
I'll second. Okay, once again, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Boltby, that we recommend conditional approval of modifications two, five, and six. With the, subject to staff and engineer comments with the further recommendation that the fee in lieu of be dropped for modifications five and six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the, all those opposed? Be unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors approval of the final land development plan for the Root Solar Project.
I'll second. Hey, makes it a clean sweep for this plan. Mr. Rohr made a motion, Mr. Boltby seconded, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for Root Solar. Uh, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll be unanimous.
Thank you so much.
But, when's it, when's this going to be done?
Here?
Is it?
Oh, isn't that long? Oh, that impacts.
That is, doesn't really. Oh, really?
Oh, it's a delay in that.
Wow.
Oh my gosh. Wow.
Wow. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Alright, was there anything under old business to come before the commission? Uh, anything in particular, Nate, that you want to talk about your September project update?
Uh, nope, I just provided it to update you on, on where all the projects that are currently open and some that are finalizing now.
Okay. And um, once again, anybody online have any public comment for the township?
Uh, no one has made a comment.
Okay. Alright, if there's no further business to come before the commission, we are adjourned.
Two seconds.